Can we entertain a motion and we come out of closed session?
I make that motion.
Have a motion, I have a second?
A second.
Start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Come on, ask each supervisor in a minute to do a certification resolution. Whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed session, this state pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where as section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. We want under section 2.2-3711 under A6 and A8. Now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session to which a certification applies. And all such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in a meeting to which a certification applies. I'll ask each member to certify, start with Mr. Early?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Horton?
I so certify.
Mr. Moore?
I so certify.
And I so certify. Okay, next I'm going to ask a motion to modify the agenda. I want to add under new business, a section G, to do a tax deadline extension.
So move.
Do I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is invocation and pledge. I'll ask Mr. Bryant if you'll lead us in that place. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be together again this evening to go over the matters of the county. And we just ask that you just help us in our decision making. And we just thank you for that, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next on the agenda, we have retirement recognition. I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Burnett to come up, please. I want to present you with a plaque for your years of service and dedication. We appreciate everything you do. You're welcome. You want to say a few words with? How many years were?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years.
Oh, yeah. Well, it was good working with you and we appreciate it. We just wanted to present you with.
Thank you guys. Appreciate all your support, helping with the Dunn School.
Right. Well, thank you. Mark, I totally appreciate you.
Enjoy. Enjoy.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a Samsung Renewables presentation. You'll come forward, please.
I have some paper copies if I can hand you guys those as well, if that's easier. You guys ready? So, hi, everyone. Thanks for adding us to the agenda today so we can talk about our Pine Branch solar project. For those of you guys I haven't met yet, my name's Madison Brant. And I'm with my colleague Chris Simmons. I'm a project manager for Samsung in our PJM region. And we put this presentation together today to share an introduction of our project and go over that with you guys. So just some background on Samsung CNT as a whole. We have a pretty large pipeline and we've developed in all areas of the world, specifically in the U.S. and Canada. And we have a growing pipeline in the MISO and PJM region. And in this map, you can see where we are currently developing all across the United States with a focus for me and Chris in the PJM region and Virginia. So for our Pine Branch solar project, this is an overview of our map. It's located about eight miles from Hillsville in the northwest corner of the North Carrollton Pike Road, west of I-77. So an overview for our project, we have a target capacity of about 40 megawatts. We have a potential base adder to that of 20 megawatts or 80 megawatt hour. We're evaluating the feasibility of that. So we have three landowners that we have option to leases with, and that's across 362 acres. Our estimated in the fence acreage would be about 259 acres. And that would include our Tier One PV panels, the solar racking, the inverter stations, the collector cabling, the project substation, and the utility switchyard. Our project is estimated to have NTP in February of 2028 and reach COD in 2029. And will connect into the 138 KV transmission line at the bottom of our project. You can see, it's a little bit of a faint line, but it's a blue line right there. So our development schedule with PJM, we've submitted our interconnection request with them in December of 2024. And that will go through three phase studies across three years. It's an estimated schedule right now. We expect Phase One system study to be in Q4 of 2025, Phase Two and Two, second quarter of 2026, and the Phase Three study in quarter four of 2026. And then we'll reach the interconnection agreement execution in the first quarter of 2027. Obviously, our Carroll County siting agreement is estimated to be end of 2025. And then we'd have our DEQ permit by rule in Q4 of 2026.
Hi, everyone. My name's Chris Simmons. I'm the development manager for Samsung CNT America. I work with Madison in a 13-state region. Are you guys familiar with who PJM is? They're a regional transmission organization that regulates all power generation, transmission, and distribution in a 13-state area. So when we say we submit an interconnection request, it is through PJM. They're the ones who evaluate our ability to construct a power generation facility and inject power into their grid. So we put together a list of anticipated permits. And this is a critical issues analysis. We had a local third-party consultant put together for us to show desktop-level critical issue analysis of our site. The land we have leased and they have options on right now is mostly undeveloped agricultural land that has a low likelihood for rare, threatened, or endangered species. So we anticipate low impacts to natural resources or cultural resources on the site. Moving forward, before we start the more formal Virginia DEQ permit by rule process, we'll do field studies where we'll have the consultants go out into the field and evaluate the current conditions, wetland delineation, species surveys, hydrological, geological surveys, full due diligence activities like that. So we will conduct a natural resources review. The Virginia DEQ permit by rule process will include wetland delineations, habitat analysis, and coordination with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to protect threatened and endangered species. Virginia has what's called the VCRIS, the Virginia Cultural Resource Information System. So we were able to do some high-level, look at some high-level online databases Virginia has, given our project's geographical location. And as of a lot of Virginia, there's potential that the site does contain intact archaeological deposits and historic architecture. And we will verify that with a cultural resource survey. So those surveys have not been conducted yet, but we will deploy archaeologists to actually go out and review the site and see if they find anything that has historical significance. A Phase One environmental site assessment through the U.S. EPA Office and advanced environmental studies will also be performed during the permit by rule process. So this is kind of a breakdown of the anticipated permit path we have for this project. This is kind of a maximum case scenario. We don't believe we're going to trigger a lot of these permits, but we wanted to set a baseline so the county could follow along with our project here moving forward over the next several months to kind of check the status. Have we done this study? Have we reviewed this? Do we need this permit or not? First, on the primary federal requirement anticipated is the Section 404 Clean Water Act permit. We anticipate that we self-certify under the National Wetlands Permit 57 for any impacts to jurisdictional features. We could trigger a National Historic Preservation Act Section 106 permit, which we would, will be done concurrently with Department of Historical Resource and State Historic Preservation Office coordination. We will consult with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We do anticipate that we self-certify through the IPAC system with a finding of no effect to, not likely to adversely affect. The IPAC system is where licensed professionals in Virginia can take the results from their field studies, any threatened or endangered species that were or were not discovered, and self-certify through the IPAC system. Primary state requirements we anticipate is, of course, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Permit by Rule, the Department of Historic Resources Letter of Concurrents, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Clean Water Act Section 402, Virginia Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems Permit. And we anticipate that we will not trigger that and utilize the Virginia General Construction Permit. Next would be the Virginia DEQ Section 401 Water Quality Certification. This is required if we cause impacts to state wetlands or streams cannot be avoided. If necessary, we anticipate the project to be minimal and covered under the Virginia DEQ Virginia Wetland Permit Program. Virginia Wetland Protection Permit Program, sorry. Lot of acronyms in these slides, so I apologize. And then through the county, we want to work with Carroll County to establish an erosion and sediment control plan, a stormwater management plan, an LDP or land disturbing permit, and building permit. So with these projects, we like to show, you know, what kind of direct and indirect economic benefits could come to the county that we are proposing these projects in. We used a company out of Rishma called Mangum Economics to do an economic analysis for us, a socioeconomic analysis for us. And they use a lot of baseline data, current tax abatement through the state of Virginia with renewable energy and the M&amp;T tax abatement, stuff like that. With our project size, the amount of equipment that we'd be purchasing and installing on-site, which would be the solar panels, the utility switchyard itself, the transformers, cables, everything that goes into the project, they ran a tax analysis on that. And then we came up with the below findings. Twenty-three direct and eight indirect and induced local job years. So with building these projects, you're not going to have one crew build the whole thing, right? You'll have a crew come in and do site preparation, then another install the access roads, another actually install the racking and the inverters, and mechanical, our electrical engineers do all the wiring. So it would actually create a lot more than 23 direct jobs. But the way it's broken down here is it shows like a local job year in case, you know, it's one individual working for an entire year. 1.4 million in associated local wages and benefits, 5.1 million in local economic output, and over 192,000 in state and local tax revenue just during the construction period alone, which we would anticipate being about 12 months. Over the life of the project, if we were to install the panels only and just do a 40-megawatt solar facility, we estimated that it would generate about 3.8 million in cumulative county revenue over the 40-year operational life of the project. We are basing our assumptions off of the revenues being generated from reassessment of the real property and payments associated with the locally adopted revenue share ordinance. Just with the project over 25 megawatts, Virginia code says, you know, renewable energy developers can pay an additional $1,400 per megawatt on a project. So we went ahead and included that in these assumptions so y'all could see those numbers as well. If we did end up constructing the best system, which is battery energy storage system, it would only, it would be a relatively smaller site. 20 megawatts would be the equivalent of about four or five shipping containers. Those have an operational life of about 20 years. And that would generate an additional about .7 million dollars over a 20-year period. So if we did include the 20-megawatt battery system next to the switchyard, we're looking at about 4.6 million over the 40-year life of the project. That's kind of a quick run-through of the Pine Branch solar project. I know that was kind of a lot to digest in a few slides, but if you guys have any questions, we'd love to talk through it.
Does anyone have any questions?
Hi.
Yes, sir.
How far is this project from the airport?
We'd have to double-check the maps. We always have to do FAA concurrents. We have, we have developed several sites, actually next to runways and on airport properties in the past. So I'd have to double-check it. I don't know off the top of my head right now.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Less than a mile.
Yeah, we would have to coordinate with the airport and the FAA to do anything.
Well, I've done some research. And the FAA recommends that solar farms be located more than five nautical miles from airports.
We haven't been stopped by being closer than five miles. I say stopped, prohibited from being closer than five miles to an airport.
Well, we have plans to lengthen our runway.
Yes, sir.
And it's going to be in that direction.
Well, we will take that back to our engineers and work with you guys to make sure we're not going to complicate anything.
I mean, do you know why? They don't want them close to airports.
No, I don't think it has anything to do with glare because all these panels have anti-reflective coating on them and.
Well, that's what they say.
Yeah. We've built these projects pretty close to runways in the past.
Well, it's, like I said, less than one statute mile from the airport. It's like 4,200 feet from the end of the runway.
Yes, sir. We'll have to, we'll have to look into it. We'll have to check on it. If they say we can't do it, we can do it. But we'll, we'll, we'll see what the engineers say and what the FAA says.
Okay. Anyone else? Didn't see anything in there about the phasing out of this project when it comes to the end?
Yeah, so these, the options that we put on properties to lease is for 40 years. It can't go beyond that. We do, you know, we would anticipate through the siting agreement negotiations to reach some kind of, you know, create a decommissioning bond or something like that, some kind of surety or financial instrument to make sure the funds are there. But all, if all things were normal, that it would take about 12 to 18 months to fully decommission the site. And we would remove everything placed, you know, the panels, the inverters. The only thing that stays on these projects is the utility switchyard. Because once they're actually constructed, any developer, they have to hand that switchyard over to the utility. So that would be a 138 KV substation built right next to the transmission line, and that would be permanent. But everything else would be fully decommissioned in 12 to 18 months. And we can work out any, you know, language regarding the process, procedure, decommissioning bond, financial instruments, stuff like that with the county.
That's all I got.
Anyone else? Give me that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is citizens time. Anyone sign up, Chris? Okay, next on the agenda is minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes that was presented in the packet.
I make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early? Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda, I entertain a motion to approve the consent counter as presented.
I make that motion.
Okay, have a motion on Mr. Bryant? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horton? We'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda, I entertain a motion to approve invoices A and B together or separate. A is 515-25 and B is 62-25.
I make a motion to approve invoices A and B together.
Okay, have a motion to approve A and B together. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Moore? Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda, I'll have a public hearing bonus for employees. We're going to open it up at 7:36. Does anyone want to speak on the public hearing? Mr. Urban, you want to speak on the?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman.
I'll let you.
Gentlemen, what you have before you is a proposed ordinance authorizing bonuses for county employees. Code of Virginia allows localities to give bonuses to employees upon the adoption of an ordinance. So you can do it, but you need to have an ordinance in place. The impetus in this situation for the proposed ordinance is that, I think rather unexpectedly, the General Assembly approved a one-time bonus of state money to full-time employees of local Departments of Social Services in the amount of 1.5% of their salary. That money comes from the state and now it's Mike to, or Justin, to correct me if I'm misunderstanding anything, but the money comes from the state to the county to then be approved and paid out to the local DSS employees. In order to do that and benefit our local DSS workers, we need to have an ordinance in place. The ordinance you have in front of you is a little broader than just that. It does give you the option to approve ordinances going forward without having to advertise another public hearing and adopt another ordinance upon following the process that's set forth in the ordinance. And basically how it works is the county administrator is authorized to propose a bonus and then bring it to the Board of Supervisors for approval. And that's whether that's out of state money or local money. But to make it clear, I've provided you with an amended ordinance. And you can see the red line just makes it clear that the county administrator is authorized to make these bonuses once he comes to the Board of Supervisors and has approval from the board, either by having it in the adopted agenda or the adopted budget, bringing it as a separate proposal, or if it's state money, bringing that to the board for approval of the dispersment. So basically, it allows you to, if need arose in the future, you could do this again without adopting another ordinance, you just can adopt a resolution.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:39. And if anyone wants to, I'll entertain a motion if we want to adopt the ordinance authorizing bonuses for county employees.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is public hearing on budget appropriation for broadband. And I'll open it up at 7:40. Mr. Watson, I'll let you speak on this.
What this public hearing is, is to allow us to go ahead with the process of broadband. As you are aware, we've received several grants that allow us to provide broadband for different areas throughout the communities. One is an ARC grant, and the other one is a body grant. What this public hearing is done, because we exceeded 1% of the total budget, so we're required by code in order to have a public hearing to do this appropriation. So what this allow us to move forward with the planned broadband for the two areas, one's with citizens and, well, one of them is ARC and one of them is the body application as we have. So it just allows us to spend the money.
If I could clarify?
Sure.
Just so that it's clear on what you're, what you're adopting. This would, would this be to add the 12,588,573 from grant funds or, and expenditure? It's a combination of local and state, okay? I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, anyone else want to speak on the broadband? Not, I'll close the public hearing at 7:42. And if anyone wants to make a motion, entertain a motion for the budget appropriation for the broadband project.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Early? Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bryant? We'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next, under new business, is the quarterly appropriations that you receive in your packet. I'll entertain a motion that we approve those. I make a motion we approve them. Okay, have a motion, Mr. Bryant? Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, under new business, is a resolution, approved amendment to the service agreement among the New River Regional Water Authority between Carroll County, With County, and the town of Withel. Do you want to speak on this, Mr. Watson?
Yes, so this resolution gives the authority to the chairman in order to sign the Fourth Amendment to the agreement that we have on capacity and debt for New River Regional Water. We are a partner, as was said, with With County, the town of Withel, and ourselves. We're going through a plant expansion at this time. And what this will allow us to do is to increase our capacity for the PSA. We have to have this resolution for the Carroll County also is approved through the PSA in order to move forward this project. We currently run anywhere between 78 and 95% of what our current allocations are. So it's a very good expansion for the county. But as this resolution itself allows the chairman to move forward with executing the documents.
Okay, anyone have any questions on it? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the New River Regional Water Authority resolution.
So move.
And motion by Mr. Moore, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is the VADI 2024 agreement.
Oh, you missed the E.
Oh, I'm sorry. HPD agreement, thank you. And next on the agenda is the criminal prosecution from Hillsville Police Department agreement.
Make a motion we approve it.
You make a motion we approve it? Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda now is the VADI 2024 agreement with ZITEL. I'm going to let Mr. Watson again speak on this a minute.
What this will allow us to do is to enter into an agreement with ZITEL in order to move forward with this project. We have to have an agreement signed upon as part of the grant. We have to have an agreement signed upon as part of the grant for expanded broadband. One of the things that I will ask is for the approval of this agreement with the, with it going through the county attorney for approval.
If I could jump in?
Go ahead, Mr. Early.
I've reviewed the agreement. I had a few things that I just think need to be clarified. Basically, this agreement provides that, you know, there's, there's a transfer of money, this grant coming from VADI. There's the amount of contribution that ZITEL will put in, and then there's a county match. And there, overall, the agreement is legal and is in good order. There are just a few things that I think we need to clarify with, with ZITEL before it's signed. So the request I would have is a motion to approve the agreement upon sign-off from, from legal counsel.
I entertain a motion to approve the agreement after, after sign-off by legal counsel?
Okay, that's fine.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Early. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next on the agenda is what we modified. Item G is a tax deadline extension. So this will be a resolution, Board of Supervisors of Carroll County, Virginia, to extend the deadline for payment of real property taxes. Of course, it'd just be for this, this portion. We'll extend it. Deadline of first off, the real property tax imposed by the county of Carroll is hereby postponed for a term of thirty-one calendar days from June twenty, twenty twenty-five to July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Anyone have any questions on it? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make that motion.
Okay, have a motion to approve it?
My second.
Have a second by Mr. Bryant. Start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next, it brings us to old business, A, committee appointments. Anyone want to have any committee appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to nominate Susan Clark to the Mount Rogers Board.
Okay, have a motion to put Susan Clark on the Mount Rogers Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Any more?
I do. I have a motion to nominate Greg Hawkes to the EDA Board again.
Greg Hawkes on EDA, okay. Have a motion to put Greg Hawkes back on the EDA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll start the vote with Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Is that all we have?
I make a motion to nominate Joey Dixon to serve on the social service board.
Okay, have a motion for Mr. Dixon to serve on the social service board. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I abstain. See anyone else? Okay. Next, that'll bring us to the six-year road plan that was in your packet.
I make a motion to approve the, from Beadock.
Okay, have a motion to approve the six-year road plan as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to board member comments. I will start with Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, just like to thank the staff, I thank the board, I thank those that came and spoke tonight. Just appreciate what everybody's doing. Thank you.
Mr. Horton?
Basically, just to reiterate what Bill said, I thank you for the staff and all the hard work everybody's putting in. Just want to think we done the right thing tonight by passing the extended tax deadline, and just want to say appreciate, thank you to the whole board for voting for that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mr. Early?
I would ask that the administration, Mr. Watson, perhaps in conjunction with the chairman, put together an article for the paper to highlight our achievements in broadband and what we're doing, the grants that have been awarded, the areas in the county that are, you know, getting served first, and the future grants that we're looking for to finish the entire county and to bring some recognition to those people that worked very hard to, to make all that happen. So, Mr. Watson, if you could perhaps do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Press release, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
If the board agrees with that.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then I appreciate the, the solar presentation is very good. Thank you. I do, I'm a pilot, and I do serve on the airport commission, and our engineers and airport planners are totally unaware of this project. I would like to have time for them to become familiar with it, and you're welcome to come to our next airport meeting if you so desire. But I, I think they need to look at it, and the FAA needs to sign off on it before we move forward with, with doing anything. Because it could potentially impact our future expansion plans for the airport, and I really don't want anything, regardless of what it is, to come in the way of doing that because it's essential for job creation in our county that we have a little bit longer runway so we can accommodate corporate aircraft, which currently we can't because of insurance requirements. So be glad to share with you the next airport meeting and put you on the agenda if you want, if you want to come to it. And I would like to have another copy of what you handed out so I can give it to our airport engineers.
We've got.
And other than that, just, you know, standing thanking everybody for what they do. Appreciate it. And thank you to the folks that showed up here tonight to listen to the county's business. I wish we had more folks from the county to show up and show an interest, but thank you, and that's really all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I'll reiterate what the other gentleman said. Thank our staff, thank Mike and Mr. Durbin and Justin and Crystal and Jason, all of our county employees. They do a great job. Thank y'all for staying late in the evening to make meetings out there for the citizens to, to be able to take part in. I also will say it was, thank you for your presentation and coming. Look forward to many more talks as this process comes to fruition. And I got one thing I want to add. I want to invite the citizens and, and the board, June twenty-sixth at six o'clock at the Duxford Community Center. Citizens and the Duxford community are going to have a ribbon cutting and a meal for a community, Community Connect Grant moving forward. And I'd like to see as many people out, and we all know they, they can cook in Duxford, so, you know, enjoy a meal, and I think citizens is going to come. They've got a lot of new tables and chairs, a lot of different things that citizens done as part of that community center grant that they got to put five million dollars worth of broadband in Lawford District and Pine Creek District. And I'd like many as can come out and show the support for them because I feel that they're going to continue to move forward with their, with their service that they're going to provide. And I know they've been working hard, putting it in, they're contractors and all, and they've been doing a really good job. So I'd just invite everybody, June twenty-sixth at six o'clock at Duxford Community Center. And I think there's a Republican primary coming up seventeenth.
June seventeenth.
Everybody has the right to go out and vote, and look forward to seeing as many people as we can.
Is that all, Mr. Moore?
Yep.
All right, thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming to the meeting. It was nice to give Mr. Manette a little recognition, and we worked with him with the schools for a long time, and he was actually assistant football coach when I went through the school. So I've known Mr. Manette for a long time. I wish him well on his retirement. Samsung Renewables, I thank you all for coming in, meeting with us, and giving a presentation. Now, you had to fly in, and it's not a quick trip, so we do appreciate you coming and look forward to some more talks with you as well. The broadband, as Mr. Early and Mr. Moore talked about, that's something that I know when we got on the board, it's almost been four years ago, that they, it was one of the big, big things, especially for their area district. I mean, we've got a lot of places in the county that don't have it, but their area is worse than, than most. And it's starting to come to fruition, and I do appreciate the, the hard work of staff, and Mr. Moore, and Mr. Early on the broadband committee on getting us some, some funding. I think it's seventeen million on the other round, so people have enough to do the whole county before it's over. So that's good news, and it needs to be talked about and shared. And I do always thank the county employees and our sheriff's office and our EMS and our volunteers for everything they do for us when we're enjoying our vacations, Memorial Day. They still have to work and, and keep everybody safe, but that's all I have, and I'll go to Mr. Watson. Okay, Mr. Durbin?
No comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
No comments, okay. I will ask for a motion for adjournment then.
I make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
My second.
Start with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.